Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to do the county's business. We pray for guidance that you would show us the way to do the county's business in the best way for the people of this county. We thank you, Father, for the privilege of living in a county like Gilmer and a country like the United States. We ask, Father, that you would bless those who are on our sickness and particularly those who are victims of this pandemic and that you would guide us through this. We could put this behind us. We ask for your protection on our first responders, our military, those who protect the liberties that we have at the risk of their own lives. These things, Father, we ask in Jesus' name. Praise the Lord to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. I'll make a motion. The agenda be approved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes of the work session meeting on April 13th, the executive session meeting on April 13th, or the regular meeting on April 14th?
I believe that may approve as written.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Cindy, you want to give our financial statement, please?
This is the financial report for April 30th. Each department should be at 33% of their expenditure budget used. There are no departments over budget as of April 30th. Overall, we are at 24% of the total revenue budget received and 25% of the total expenditure budget used. Total revenue received to date, $8,133,027. Total expenditures to date, $8,754,171.
Anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you, Cindy. If there's no unfinished business, we have seven resumings. And we can treat these in groups. So I would make a motion that the first six be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would make a motion that number seven be denied.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Final decision by the Gilmer County Board of Commissioners considering a recommendation by the Gilmer County Plan and Commission regarding the application for a 2022 River Outfitters license for LJ River Outfitters. Karen has said that everything is in order, so I would make a motion that this be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Which brings us to citizens wishing to speak. Anybody that would like to speak on any topic? I think that's sound. But it should be some aggravating ideas for within 10 minutes. Yes, sir.
A concerned Gilmer County resident. This here will tell two things about me here in Gilmer. Actually, three. I sounded the alarm on issues related to overdevelopment coming to this county. And that was the Chamber of Commerce, this board, and the Development Authority's policies brought that upon us. Secondly, there exist numerous conflicts of interest in county governance, and I've brought them to attention. Thirdly, my concerns were ignored by this board, and I was summarily dismissed. At this point, I'm just getting things on the record for purposes to determine on later date. Webster's Dictionary defines broadband as a high-capacity transmission technique using a wide range of frequencies which enables a large number of messages to be communicated simultaneously. By definition, Gilmer County has broadband. Gilmer County has also adopted broadband ordinance that allows and continues to allow expansion of broadband into the majority of the county by ETC. A service map can be found readily available online for anybody to see. So yes, we already have broadband here in Gilmer. What we lack is broadband extension in some previously undeveloped areas of county, and we can use the boosters to tie into what we already have to meet those needs. And because of what our money opinion follows development practices in allowing volumes of development in remote areas of this county coupled with multiple national marketing campaigns by developers, investors, real estate agencies, and the Chamber of Commerce, people unwittingly moving here unaware that our infrastructure is a far cry from what they're used to in their cities and an ever-increasing demand for services to tourists whose needs seem to bear greater weight than those of us residents. There is pressure on this board to do something about it. I understand that. I experienced what I described in my own life as high-speed internet withdrawals when I moved here. But I also understood it wasn't the county's responsibility to deliver high-speed internet to me. I had considered it when I moved here, so it was a matter of buyer beware. Caveat in tour. The legal doctrine that places on buyers the burden to reasonably examine the property before purchase and take responsibility for its condition. You moved here. We did not have broadband in those areas. Buyer beware. I digress. At present, ETC's broadband capability, where it exists anyway, is sufficient to allow citizens access to telephone, cable TV, worldwide, and unlimited internet data. I also understand there are areas that are underserved, underserved, as I said before, and they can use a boost. Thanks to ETC, we have 1 gig speeds through night, which is what I use for downloads, and 50 megabytes for uploads, starting at just $49.99 a month. And then I'm not advertising for them. I'm not being paid to advertise for ETC. What we don't have is 5G-capable infrastructure. And what we aren't is designated a broadband-ready community, well, not yet anyway. Not certified, but I understand the boxes have been checked for that. As I believe you're aware, there's a big difference between having available broadband services and being a TCA-certified broadband-ready community. State and federal funding is one of those things that make a difference. I do not oppose expansion of broadband services to our underserved community. Why I am concerned about are the strings attached to that, and the designated certification becomes the next step in a whole wave of commercial development, VTR development, and the impact, which is built-to-rent, development, and the impact it will have on this community in the long run, which is my sole concern. Let me declare our designation as a broadband-ready community is necessary for ETC or Verizon and anyone else to receive funding to eventually expand 5G into our area. And this board will decide which one receives that funding to install the equipment and eventually provide service and derive revenues thereof. Again, I still personally prefer ETC, but this is not about them, and I'll get back to that later if I have time. 5G capability is something developers and investors are very much interested in, especially in rural communities, which seems to be a very targeted area for them right now in our nation, not just here in Gilmer, but around the nation. And before they'll make an investment and relocate to our community, they're going to need that. They're going to require that. And TCA is happy to help make that happen. 5G is directly linked to growth and development, which are two issues very near and dear to this member of this community and a concern as a concerned citizen who represents the voice of a large swath of this community. Not all of them, but enough of them, that is elected officials, you should be listening to me. Fenton County recently tabled the expansion of 5G broadband because there was enough of a public health concern, safety concern with 5G presented by Dr. Ann Merkel, that they determined a closer look was merited. This is also something I mentioned to this board previously as being a topic of concern raised by the U.S. Congress. What do we know about the equipment and the associated health risks? We need to seek medical data from non-interested parties. Due diligence is the duty of this board. There is also a concern raised by U.S. Cyber diplomat Robert Strayer and CISP director Chris Kreb, who are our international authorities on cybersecurity, who raised concerns over the reliance of Chinese vendors in 5G networks. 5G is, in fact, Chinese technology. This is not a conspiracy theory. And it's actually what U.S. Cyber Securities Authorities have said. We need to seek tech and privacy data, information and research from non-interested parties as well. Due diligence in that area is also the obligation of this board. These are just two things. It is beholden to find this board to explore prior to making decisions related to our health and privacy rights. It is determined that these two things are not satisfied at this point. If they are satisfied, I would not object. One last thing, and then I'm done. I was present during an April VOC meeting where this board discussed two proposals between Verizon and ETC. During that meeting, county attorney David Clark opined that two contract proposals before the board were relatively the same. I'm paraphrasing. The exact phrase he allured can be found on Peture News. Not plugging for them either. That's where you can find it. Mr. Clark was corrected by Mr. Parker that day, saying that there was a difference between, most notably, between higher upfront bank costs and monthly service costs. During that meeting, Don Murray spoke, saying that his concern about going to Verizon was customer service, and I don't say that I disagree with him at all there. I think that that date might have been the only time that I agreed with Mrs. Ferguson of anything about the quality of service provided by ETC. So let's put that on the record as well. In closing, having said all of that, I believe a conflict exists because full disclosure has not been met in this situation. After that meeting, I was curious about the Mr. Clark support of us adopting the ETC contract, and I did observe that a conflict exists because ETC is a client of Clark and Clark law. So I believe that the members of Clark and Clark law need to recuse themselves from any decisions stemming in that contract. I'm not making a slight against them as individuals. I just think that there's a conflict that exists that we have an obligation to look at. And they are held by their own ethics board to recuse themselves as well from that decision-making. Thank you.
I would like to say that Clark and Clark had no part in the decision. It was the three commissioners that voted to accept the ETC bid. I think that we have a longstanding connection with ETC, a longstanding relationship with them. And they were the low bidder, and it's kind of hard to overcome those two issues and justify votes for Verizon. But, and I know that David gave the opinion that the two contracts were essentially identical, and they were very close, but Clark and Clark had no part in that decision. It was the three commissioners. Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, excuse me, if I remember correctly, ETC was substantially lower than Verizon.
Right.
For monthly service, not upfront cost.
Big pardon?
Upfront cost, too.
Did they bring their bid down?
Yes.
Yes.
They waived the $14,000 upfront, and the upfront cost is zero, which is why we...
It was substantially lower overall.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. My name is Dave Morris. It's the first time I've been here, but I've been off of Old Finley Road, which is off Clear Creek Road, for about 23 years. And I'm here to talk about water quality, and I'm going to tell you two things to begin with, and you might throw me right out the door immediately. I don't have to shit us in here. So the first thing is I'm a lawyer, and the second thing is I used to work for the federal government, the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency.
And you were doing so well for a bit.
I know. I know. If anybody must have ran me on the way out the door, that's fine. But I don't do that anymore. Now, I help out people like railroads and utility companies and sometimes developers. But I wanted to just say hello, to offer my assistance if I can with anything, but also there's some development that's been coming in, and that's the reason why I'm here today. And so a lot of the work that I've done over the years includes, I've worked for environmental groups. I've worked for one down in Atlanta called Riverkeeper for a while, too. And so a lot of the development that they've had to deal with, they have learned some things, which they may be some things that I could help with Gilmer County. So on my stream, which is Clear Creek, we bought here 23 years ago, and you might call it crazy, but my thought was, okay, I want to be on a creek because in case water runs out, I got water. And in case, you know, food runs out, you know, there are trout in there. It's a primary trout stream. But it only stays that way if it stays cold and, you know, the water doesn't get dirty and we won't have septic. So just wanted to mention that. And I may be talking to the commission and the zoning board about some of the development, but my idea is to try to help, and that's the goal I have. So thank you all for what you do, and it's a great pleasure to meet you all.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Keep in mind, too, that we do have a separate water and sewer authority that we have no control over, but, okay, I'll have to learn about that. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? All right. If not, we will proceed. Appointment of a member to the Kids Cottage Board. I would make a motion that Merrill Neighbors be reappointed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion and possible action of memorandum of agreement with Georgia Northwestern Technical I think maybe the best way to proceed with that would be...
So it's my understanding yesterday morning, they wanted an omission of, like, dental hygienas, the RNs, so all that was taken out of the memorandum of understanding, and it only indicates paramedic anti-stuarts.
I'm seeing the revision, yes.
Yes, sir. So hopefully that satisfies what the board needs in order to move forward with the contract.
That was it, yes, sir. So Deb leading the kids, I would make a motion that be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Discussion and possible action of rural fire defense agreement memorandum of understanding, including Georgia Forestry Commission and fire departments in Georgia. This is the yearly one that we fill out the equipment that we have and basically say we're not going to sell it or destroy it or do any of that stuff to it.
Yes, sir.
So I'd make a motion that that be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carolyn, are you still able to hear us?
Yes, you guys, you're going in and in a lot. It's hard for me to understand.
Okay. I'll try to talk a little bit slower, and maybe that'll help. Discussion and possible action of budget amendments. I only have really two that I want to, that I think may be fairly urgent. The first one is, we have a situation at the airport where we have got to take down a number of trees that are in the side path of the, is it the AWAC?
A WOS.
A WOS. One of those things. We can't, you know, it should be working properly now, but we can't get approval to turn it up because those trees are in the flight path. And we're looking at an inspection coming up very soon at the airport, and we're liable to face some consequences if we can't get those trees down. We've taken down quite a few trees. The only thing we have left is some trees that are on private property, and we're trying to negotiate.
Excuse me, Carolyn. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Can you talk into my, I can't understand what you're saying.
I'm sorry, what?
I cannot understand what you're, I'm unclear of the trees.
So you unable to hear what I'm saying, is that...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have trees that are on private property that have to be cut down because they're in the flight path, they interrupt the flight path for the A W O S system, the landing system. And we're looking at an airport inspection here in the next couple of weeks that that's going to be one of the things that they're looking at. We are currently negotiating with the property owner, so I don't have a figure to give you right now, other than to say that it's going to be quite a bit more, it looks like, than what I thought it was going to be. Right now, it looks like it could be as much as $50,000 between actually cutting down these trees and disposing of them and paying the property owner for the right to do that. So that's something that we did not put in the 22 budget, and we're going to have to address that at some point.
What size of land area are we talking about?
36 feet.
36 feet?
36 trees.
Oh, 36 trees. I'm sorry.
How much land area are we talking about?
What width wants to allow?
Half acre?
Sorry.
Half acre?
Yes.
I don't like to do this, but do we need to think about condemnation?
In the end, if we can't get some sort of agreement, we may have to do that because the trees have got to go. But the problem that we've got right now is condemnation is a slow process.
$50,000 is a very unreasonable amount for 36 trees. I know they're important to the landowner.
Well, $31,000, $31,000 of that is actually the labor and so forth to get them down. The rest of it would be for the landowner.
So what are, we don't have a figure on that, so we can't really do it, but...
We can't. You know, just to, just to let y'all know that... Okay, but this does not include the landowners' fee.
This is just what you just talked about.
Okay. Okay. Plus $41,000, but this includes another batch of trees, two batches of trees, and plus what this one landowner wants for his trees, so it'll be through the work. But I just wanted y'all to be aware that this is on the horizon. The other thing is, we had talked about moving $200,000 into road striping on the ARPA funding, and we hit a bit of a snag with that because ARPA funding is capital money and road striping is not a capital expense. I brought this, y'all may already have it. This is something that Sandy gave me. Carolyn, I emailed it, too. Hopefully you got that.
I, when did, when did you email it?
Couple hours ago. Well, probably three or four hours ago.
I don't, I don't think I got it today.
Okay, well, I'll try to figure out what happened on that. The thing that I want to bring to your attention is, and it may be better, Sandy explained it, but they've, they've come up with what they call a revenue loss allowance. And as I understand it, and I believe this has already been approved, as I understand it, if the money received is less than $10 million, which would be us, then you can just take a standard, kind of like when you take standard deduction on your taxes, you can just take a standard amount and say we're showing this as revenue loss allowance. And then that money can be used to provide, among other things, government services generally include any service traditionally provided by government. So it can be used to provide government services, and that means it doesn't have to be capital. And in the list of examples that they give, one of the examples for what this money can be used for is road building and maintenance and other infrastructure. So road striping fits right in. I think we're good to just keep that and continue to have it allocated to road striping.
And I think they changed the rule. Well, they removed all rules.
That, if you're attending me right there, that's true.
We've already rescinded it, so we need to...
I think, yeah, I think we need to unrescind it. So, and so basically, I would make a motion that the $200,000 be restored for road striping from that funding.
Was it 200 or 250?
250, I'm sorry.
I believe 250.
250.
With 250, I'll second that.
And any discussion? Carleen, can you, hopefully you can hear, or maybe not. Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, so...
I will, if it's okay with you, I'll get with you after this and kind of give you a rundown on what this is.
Okay, that'll be great.
And then I'll try to find out why you didn't get the email. That, I believe, is, oh, okay. Last item is adoption of first reader for the hotel motel excise tax. And I'm going to back up about four steps, duck behind this thing, make a motion that we approve the first reader.
We need to insert the date. July 1 date.
With July 1 date, okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So that just means we'll vote on it again in June, so... Does anybody need executive session?
I do not.
Oh. Actually, I do want to discuss those. I had misplaced my page that I had this on here. Okay. All right, so there are some additional budget amendments that we discussed yesterday. Whether or not we want to approve the request for $3,000 for utility... Whether or not we want to approve the request for $3,000 for utilities for the Tabor House. Approve funding for the pickleball courts lighting. Approve the additional money for the flood control dams after the $62,000, $16,000. Jim, do you have a final figure on that? We can do that next time. And we talked about the airport tree removal, so, the first question is, and I'm going to throw it out there, I'm not going to comment myself, do we want to approve the request for the $3,000 for utilities for the Tabor House?
I don't have any strong feeling one way or the other.
Okay. Carleen, could you hear that?
I believe so, I would like to see that approved.
Okay. All right, well then, I would make a motion that the $3,000 utility for the Tabor House for 22 be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I believe that we said that the pickleball court lighting would come from contingency?
Through capital.
Yeah. I'm sorry, so capital contingency. I would make a motion that that be funded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've talked about the airport tree removal, we'll have to get more information on that, and the...
I'm losing you guys again.
Okay. Let's see. Carleen, I'm going to move you closer to me and take you off the speaker thing.
Sure.
Sorry, thanks everyone for their patience.
That's all right. Can you hear me any better now?
I can read very well right now.
Okay, good, good. Just in time for a motion to adjourn, but since you can hear me, let me just very quickly say that what we were talking about earlier is that the ARPA funding, the latest ruling is that if you receive less than $10 million, you can simply choose to take a standard loss recovery on that without having to itemize anything, sort of like a standard deduction on your income taxes. And that that can then be used, it doesn't have to be capital, it can be used to provide any governments, well, it can be used to provide government services, and in the examples of what government services would be acceptable, it specifically says road building and maintenance and other infrastructure. So, based on that, we had voted to go ahead and reapply the $250,000 that we had previously allocated to road striping. We had de-allocated it because it was capital money and road striping's not a capital type thing, but now this money does not have to be used for capital expenditures, so we're putting it back, so... And the airport tree removal thing is, we didn't come up again, we've got a bunch of trees that we have to remove, this has been a flight path at the airport for some computerized equipment there, and we don't have a final figure on that, but we'll pursue that. Okay, so we got Tabor House, pickleball. Ma'am, does anybody need us? I, executive session.
I do not.
Okay. It was a no.
Now, Carleen, Carleen, can you hear me? I make a motion to be adjourned.
He did, and I'm seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Carleen. But it was awful in this town, don't you think?